Alrighty, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council together, May 18th, 2015. Audits please call the wall for attendance.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Marmin.
Here.
Mr. Ratt.
Here.
Mr. Roulette.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Buck.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
And Ms. Hall.
Here.
We have all here this evening, thank you. If you please rise for the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, one of the pledged allegiance.
Would you please bow your heads. Almighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to be together to make decisions for the city of Newark. We ask that as warmer weather is coming on, there are lots of outdoor activities, and there are going to be a lot of people out and about, many schoolchildren are going to be out. We ask that you be with them and help us to keep them safe in our city. We thank you for our safety forces, we thank you for all the city workers who work diligently for the citizens of Newark. We ask that you be with them as they go about their daily work. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions affecting the city of Newark. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything that they have to say about the agenda this evening. Do we have anything for caucus? See none. Next, we have the minutes of our May 4, 2015 meeting. Is there a motion approved of?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ratt. Second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes, thank you. We have two reports of standing committees this evening, one from finance and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports from city officials tonight, one from Steven Johnson, our auditor, and one from Barb Jobs, our tax administrator. Also without objections, those will also be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have four communications, one from Bill DeVore, one from the High Division of Liquor Control, one from Lon Barbour, and one from the North Granville Community Authority, talking about a meeting which has already happened this evening before 6:00 P.M. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. One other thing on the communications tonight, Everett, could you come forward just a second? Mayor Hall has something he'd like to give you. Or Mayor will head back that way.
I've just joined us up here for just a minute, Everett. Everett works hard coming in here every night and certainly tapes our show to put somebody out for people that can't make it to kind of revisit and watch what goes on in here. He's done this diligently for a while. He used to visit us, I think, twice a month, and now it's every meeting. He's certainly in and out of the weather with his equipment, and we just really appreciate everything he's did. And as a token of his gesture here at council, and myself, I want to thank you for everything you've done with us. A nice round of applause. Remember, Everett does this free grouse, and that's why I'd like to explain. He's quite a dancer, so he's got a new pair of hands. He's very good on their feet, so thank you very much, Everett.
I'd like to add our thanks to the council to Everett. So thank you very much for your work. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. That's the time for you to let us know what's on your mind. This is not a debate with council, but an opportunity for you to come up and just let us know what you have to say. Could you just please make a brief comment? Give us your name and address for the record, if you would, will you?
My name is Will Butcher, 12263 Union Street. I bought my case to my lady friend here, and she's cleaning the back. She just wanted to thank Newark City Council and the Street Department for finding a job or patching the street, patching my alley, and patching me because she complained to me about how rough it was, how many potholes was there, she was afraid that might break her car's axle. I can't blame her, no one bit, blame her complaints to me and address them to you. I just want to say that the city didn't find a job, and let me just say that the city's street maintenance department are doing a fine job on these streets. And my neighbor was asking me, she says, "When is Union Street going to get paid?" I said, "I don't know." I walked, looked in on it, and they're like, "No, when is Union Street going to get paid?" And Jimmy, there's something you can do, you can do me off. I'd like to have an old traffic light put in my apartment. An old traffic light. I got me a emergency light at home, and I'd tell me an old traffic light or an old emergency light, and put it in my apartment, put it on top of my TV. And the Top 10 forecast, Charlotte thunderstorms should be out of here by later tonight, but there's more cooler temperatures on the way by tomorrow. Tides only in mid-seventies, but there's chance of rain or thunderstorms by middle of next week. Now, we'll get your Top 10, 10-day weather forecast.
Thank you, Everett. Mike?
Michael Blaine, 124 South Cedar Street, New York, Ohio. My concerns is the congregation of young children, of young teenagers down on the square in front of McDonald's, and on the west side of the square, it's making it hard time to walk around the square without being harassed and picked on. There was a young man that was beat up Thursday night. He was sent to the University Hospital in critical condition, life-threatening injuries from these kids down here. Three of them beat on him and kicked him when he was down. And the citizens of Candlewick, they're afraid to step outside of their apartment and sit outside with a congregation of kids in front of McDonald's. And I think it's a safety concern.
Thank you, Mike. We will pass that on to the safety director, and the mayor will pass it on to the safety director, and we'll see what happens.
Well, something's got to be done because I like to walk around the square, but on the west side, the kids hang around, and you've got to walk around them. Which ain't right. We should have applications to use the sidewalks and not be afraid to walk into city and our town.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizens' comments? Yes.
Good afternoon, council. Mr. Mayor, members of the Historical Hudson Community Association as well. I am here today after meetings. Oh, Mark Fraser, 20 West North Street, Newark, Ohio, 43055. I'm here today on behalf of, after speaking to the Historical Hudson Community Association, speaking to the mayor. My residence borders the North Street Park, and as part of community improvement, I propose the Historical Hudson Community Association that we perform some landscaping in the park in order to improve the look and the feel and the usability of the park. And so, that is going to be paid for out of my own pocket, and we would like a resolution from city council supporting this. That's a bipartisan move. And so, what we're looking to do is do a retaining wall on the west portion, and then use this as kind of a stepping stone to bring about an overall improvement to the park. The Historical Hudson Community identified this as a major initiative that they wanted to embark on. They have been doing fundraisers to try to achieve this goal, and so, I want to take part and put forth my own effort to improve my own community. And so, I hope that you can support this. Once again, I'm organizing volunteers, I'm paying for the materials, and we're performing the work as soon as possible. And so, a day that we're kind of looking at is for this weekend. And so, we want to see real action, real results, and I feel like this is a step in the right direction for improving our city's parks and improving our community. So I hope you guys will support us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I may get you in touch with Mr. Rhodes, I think that...
I've already spoken to him.
Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Ma'am?
Students from McGuffey Elementary, 130 Green Mead Drive. Good evening, Newark City Council members. As you know, we are a group of fifth grade students from L.M.H. McGuffey Elementary. We, along with our teacher, Ms. Borja, have been meeting to learn more about the World Heritage Process and how it could potentially affect our hometown of New York.
We presented a PowerPoint to the Economic Development Committee on April 27th, asking you to sign a resolution of support on behalf of the Hopewell Ceremony of Earthworks becoming a World Heritage Site. Today, we would like to restate our main points and ask that you sign the resolution for us today.
As you know, the incredible Newark Earthworks lies within the boundaries of our town. These giant geometric earthworks were built by a culture of Native Americans known as the Hopewell, who lived here over 2,000 years ago. The Newark Earthworks are just a part of a magnificent network of earthworks that the Hopewell built throughout Ohio. And together, these sites are on the brink of becoming World Heritage Sites. Collectively, they are on the tentative list as the Hopewell Ceremonial Earthworks. These sites on the list include the Newark Earthworks and four ancient earthworks, which are managed by Ohio History Center, and five sites that are managed by the National Park Service, which include mound city, Hopewell mound group, Hookton Earthworks, High Bank Earthworks, and Cypress Earthworks. Next, we would like to remind you about what the World Heritage List is and why these Hopewell sites should be on the list. The United Nations Educational and Scientific Organization, known as UNESCO, keeps a list of sites around the world that have outstanding universal value. There are currently 1,007 properties on this list. 779 are recognized for their cultural value. 197 are recognized for their natural significance. 31 have value that makes us both cultural and natural importance. Currently, there are only 22 World Heritage Sites in the United States, and only nine of these are known for their cultural significance. None of these are in Ohio. UNESCO maintains a tentative list of sites that have met the preliminary requirements for becoming World Heritage Sites. The Hopewell Ceremonial Earthworks have been on this list since 2008. We are trying to raise awareness about the importance of these Hopewell sites so that the United States will see fit to move our nomination forward in this process. Only one site per year from the United States can be presented to UNESCO for possible inclusion on the World Heritage List. So why are the Hopewell Ceremonial Earthworks so special? Why do we think we should be on the World Heritage List?
In our formal PowerPoint presentation, we give you details about each of these sites that are part of our Hopewell Ceremonial Earthworks nomination. So we will not repeat that today. We hope we have already convinced you that the Hopewell Earthworks are amazing geometric enclosures and mounds that are unlike anything else on Earth, and they deserve to be recognized
In fact, at this very moment, an international team of archaeologists are conducting geophysical research on the earthworks in Chillicothe. We have copies of the recent newspaper article we can hand out after this meeting. The official findings from this research cannot be released for some time, but the archaeologists have hinted that new discoveries have been made in just the past few weeks.
This is not the first team of international scholars to study the earthworks. In 2011, scholars from all over the world came to Newark to study the Hopewell sites. A book will be released based on the discussions from this meeting. The Newark Earthworks received international attention in 1999, when Chris Carr included them in the book, in his book, 70 wonders of the ancient world.
You may ask why a group of fifth graders gave up a valuable social time to work on this project. Well, in our textbooks, we see pictures of places like Stonehenge and the Great Wall of China, and we love learning about the people who built them and how they were used by different cultures throughout the years. We want students in our other countries to open up their textbooks and see our beautiful earthworks and dream about visiting them someday. We want future students to see pictures of the intriguing artwork that the Hopewell left behind, in hopes that they will grow up and study them and add it to what we have learned about them now. And most importantly, we want these amazing earthworks to be preserved for future generations.
So now, let's talk money. Though we have said so far has not convinced you, then maybe this will. Having a World Heritage Site in a community can lead to great financial gain. Cahokia Mounds in Illinois saw their tourism increase 10 times when they became a World
An outside consulting firm estimate that Ohio tourism could increase by 200,000 visitors per year should be honored by having World Heritage Sites on our state. This would result in 80 million in total spending increases of 21 million in additional annual wages in Ohio, and over 5 million in annual state and local tax revenues.
I hope we have convinced you that we all should be doing everything we can to move our World Heritage nomination forward. I found a quote that said, "The degree to which we value the beauty of the natural and cultural diversity of our planet will be the degree to which we honor and protect it." We owe it to future generations to not let any more destruction happen to these one-of-a-kind
If members of the audience would like to know how to get involved, we have flyers that we can hand out that will give you information on how you can stay up to date on our nomination. The website, worldheritageohio.org, will be kept current with information about our nomination. Thank you for inviting us to speak with you today. We look forward to continuing to work on this project with you in the future.
Thank you, McGuffey class, for that very good presentation. We also enjoyed it during committee. Your resolution is on the second reading tonight, Resolution 1540, so it should be voted on, and hopefully can move out to the next step for you. Dr. Shields, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'd just tell you that the nomination process is going very, very well. Brad Lepper is here, who was part of drafting much of the nomination materials that we already have. The book that was spoken of will be published by the University of Virginia Press a year from now. Things are going very, very well.
Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments?
That's going to be hard to follow, but...
That's good. That's a tough one to follow.
Melissa Lanter, I live at 116 Maholom Street, but I manage 340 Eastern Avenue, Washington Square Plaza. I spoke last month to you. Our process has began, the renovations of our buildings. The gentleman spoke of Candlewick, which we do manage. There is several issues, they cannot come outside. There are sometimes 20 to 25 teens blocking the door. So that is an issue, but as I said, our renovations have started, and I had talked to you at the meeting last month. Groundbreaking has started on the new playground at the townhomes at 425 Washington. Ribbon ceremony, June 4th at noon, and I invite each and every one to come, see what is in store. One of the concerns that our company, Beacon 360 Management, has is where we're spending, I know, $4 million at my building alone, at 340 Eastern Avenue, is the boarded-up homes that's causing, there's a lot of drug activity at those homes, a lot of, you know, crime, and what the city has planned to do with that. Right now, townhomes alone, within, right, our last meeting to now is over $600,000 they're putting in, the $4 million that I am at my building, around $400,000 at the Rendy Murray, and about $350,000 at the John Sheets Building. Where I'd mentioned last time that it's going to take a lot, it's going to take everyone to give the east side of town a new image. And the new image, we can set some standards, but the vacant buildings that are standing in that area of Mill Street, Henderson, Cedar, Washington, we need help with that, and we ask the, you know, the city, see what we can do with the abandoned buildings and the abandoned homes, if we can have landlords be held accountable, or what to do there. And again, I wish that all of you would come on June 4th. Ribbon ceremony starts at noon, and it's going all day long. And then also, on June 13th, my building, it's a Saturday, is hosting a block party for the neighborhood. We'll have food, games for kids, vendors, everything there, and again, invite you there also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? There was one other section after the legislation. We'll move on to ordinances on the second reading, 15-11. Do you want to wait till ordinance, or, I know you said some of them may have to go. About three ordinances, we'll be voting on that, if you'd like to stick around.
We can, we'll stay, yeah.
Okay.
Ordinance 15-11 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmin, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the Department of Economic and Community Development by abolishing, or, excuse me, abolishment of one transit operations coordinator, community development.
You've heard the second reading of 15-11, what does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
Make motion to adopt 15-11.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 15-11?
We basically no longer have a transit department, so...
Thank you. Audits, call the wall.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmin.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roulette.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-11 passes 10-0. Next, we have on the second reading, 15-13.
Ordinance 15-13 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmin, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Newark City Safety Director to certify to the Lickin County Auditor the sum of $91,008 incurred by the Newark City Property Maintenance Division with respect to property maintenance violations to be placed as a lien upon certain parcels of real property situated in the city of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 15-13, what is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cos. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 15-13. Motion by Mr. Cos. Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on 15-13?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ratt.
I'd like to make a motion to amend 15-13. On the third page, at the bottom, towards the bottom of the page, there's a property listed at 61 Bowers Avenue, owned by Judith Green, with a proposed lien of $1,442. This property had a dilapidated garage on it, and the notices were given in November to the tenant. The landlord did not receive the notices in due time, but by March, that garage was eliminated, destroyed, and eliminated, and came into compliance. They are currently in the process of negotiating a lesser of applying, if you will. So if, whatever they negotiate, she either pays it, or she's going to be on the lien list next time this comes around. So I'd like to make a motion to omit the property located at 61 Bowers Avenue at this time.
Motion by Mr. Ratt. Second. Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, Mr. President, I guess I'd just like to know if the administration is on board with that. Good evening, Mr. President. I'd like to have a question again, please. Mr. President, Mr. Spurgeon, what I'd like to know is, I'm assuming you've heard Mr. Ratt's amendment.
I did.
I'd just like to know if you folks are on board with the amendment.
We are not.
Okay, can you, can we ask Mr. Spurgeon to expand?
I've met with Joe Paul over a week ago. I got a call from the actual proprietor of the residence. I reviewed my notes this morning, and I returned the proprietor's call. We weren't able to speak, but the law does not allow an exclusion just because they didn't get notified. This was a property that we had dealt with for over a year, and it was mitigated recently. So I'm unaware that the law gives me some kind of discretion to say, "Hey, you know, I fixed it, can you take those fines away?"
Mr. President.
Mr. Ratt.
I am shocked, I guess, but nonetheless, I'll be voting no on the amendment because this is information that I was not made aware of. I was under the impression that the administration was with this, so I will vote no for my own amendment.
Well, you can maybe withdraw the amendment, if you'd like.
Well, it's been first and second.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, we'll just go with that.
So I don't think that's procedurally correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
So anybody else can vote as they wish, but...
Do we have any other questions, Mr. Spurgeon, while he's here? Okay, any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Any other discussion on the amendment? See none, I'll just call the wall.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. Marmin.
No.
Mr. Ratt.
No.
Mr. Roulette.
No.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Buck.
No.
Mr. Cos.
No.
Mrs. Floyd.
No.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
And Ms. Hall.
No.
So it is, the amendment does not pass, so now we're back to 15-13. You've got a motion by Mr. Cos, and a second. Do we have any discussion? See none, I'll just call the wall and vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmin.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roulette.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-13 passes as is. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 15-40.
Resolution 15-40 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Ratt, a resolution in support of adding the Newark Earthworks to the United Nations Education, Scientific, and Cultural Education Organization's list of World Heritage Sites.
You've heard the second reading of 15-40, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ratt.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-40.
Motion by Mr. Ratt, second by Mr. Blake. Do we have any discussion on 15-40?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
I just want, oh, did you want to say that?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm just listening.
I thought you, you always make noises, so...
Somebody's...
Mr. President, I just want to say, you know, I'm very proud of the students, you know, Mrs. Borja's class, you just, the whole process at which you went through over the last, I guess, month, six weeks or so, possibly even longer, because you did a lot of work within your classroom in preparing for the meetings that you came to. And so, each of you students should be very proud of the presentations that you gave here at City Hall. And, you know, what you may not know is that you learned the legislative process of local government. You worked with a city legislator, a city councilman, you drafted a resolution, you spoke at committee, and then tonight, you spoke here before we voted on final passage. So, you know, just learning that process is very important, and, you know, a lot of times, we hear through the media and through other news outlets about the importance of learning civics and history and government, and here you, through this example, you've learned that, and you experienced it firsthand. So I congratulate you for coming down here and preparing your comments and doing what you did in advocating for this resolution. Secondly, I just want to advocate for the merits of the resolution. You know, I think we're all in, at least most of us are in favor of seeing this on the World Heritage Site, the Newark Earthworks, for its economic development, positive aspects, and for the benefits that it will bring to Newark and Lickin County. And so, I think this was a great example of being able to work with the students, being able to work with the city council and the mayor and his administration, and so I think this was a great example to bring forward, and I'm glad you did. And I think this is going to be, you know, help the other applications in trying to move this forward with getting it off the tentative list and getting it on the permanent list. And so, any effort that we could do to do that, I'm glad to play a little part of that. So thank you, Mrs. Borja, and the students, and for the others that have been advocating to get this onto the United Nations World Heritage List, so that the whole world will know about our Newark Earthworks. So thank you very much for coming.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Guthrie.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to add to what Jeremy said. I think this is absolutely a perfect example of the kind of community support resolution that we should be dealing with. I appreciate the fact that it's on our agenda, and I appreciate McGuffey Elementary, a school that my youngest daughter went to for two of the best years of her whole years in school, and I'm just really proud that all of you are here and proud to vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Raff, if you must be gone, please call a little bit.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm pleased to be the first to say yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
15-40 passes 10-0, so. Next on the agenda, we have 15-41.
Resolution 15-41 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-41. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Moved to adopt 15-41.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-41? Seeing none, I'll just call a little bit.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
15-41 passes 8-2. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 15-46.
Resolution 15-46 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-46 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-47.
Resolution 15-47 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-47. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, moved to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second. Moved away the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Buck. Mr. Blake?
We wanted to get these, this transfer of funds, so we can get the training materials and the clothing for these officers.
Mr. Blake, Alden, please call a little bit. Waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, moved to adopt 15-47.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 15-47? Seeing none, I'll just call a little bit.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
15-47 passes 10-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 15-48.
Resolution 15-48 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-48.
Yes, Mr. President. We have to waive the two-day reading.
Waive the two-day reading rule by Ms. Hall, second by Mrs. Floyd. Ms. Hall?
Painting streets.
Okay.
Let's get started.
Alden, please call a little bit.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Ms. Hall?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 15-48?
Mr. President, Mr. Blake? I just want to say that it would be nice to get a listing of what streets are going to be targeted for this cycle. I mean, I had an email exchange with Ross, Mr. Morehead, but it would, at some point, it'd be nice to know what streets aren't going to be paved, so I'll just throw that out there.
I'll see if I can get one of those, get one of those out. I know Mr. Morehead has one, I think I've seen one, but I'll make sure we can get that sent out there by. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll just call a little bit.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
15-48 passes 10-0. Next, we have 15-49.
Resolution 15-49 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
And 15-49 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And that concludes our legislations this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, again, we have comments from citizens. This is your second opportunity. Come on, let's get, start this way, William. This is your second opportunity to let us know what you think. Again, this is not a debate with council, but opportunity to come up and just give us a.
William Butcher, 263 Union Street. You asked which street we want to be paved first. I think my street should be the first one ever be paved, and it's in bad shape. And the reason why I say that, I live on that street, I live in the South End, and I think it should be paved. I've seen West Main paved, I think Union Street should be paved. My street be first on that list. And generally, I'd have a old traffic light, or a traffic light, or a street sign, or a parking meter. And my adopted 10 forecast, the Charlotte Sunstorm should be out here by tonight, more cool temperatures by tomorrow, only mid-70s by tomorrow, the weekend, high near 83. I'm looking at temperatures mid-upper 90s. So I get 7, I get a 10-8 to the weather forecast.
Thank you, William. Now, I'll tell you what, I have a parking meter, I'd like to put a stand for it.
Hook it up.
We'll hook you up one now. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I would like to add to what Mr. Blake said, and I would like to see the opening from the.
Did you give us your name and address?
John, Devon McDonald, 77 Bowers Avenue, 43055. I'd like to see the opening to South Second Street from the square being paved, because it's been tore down and closed for at least a month or two now, and I would like to see that get paved and worked on.
Okay, thank you. They're working on that one right now. Anyone else?
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth. Wanted to make a correction from my last speaking at council, that it was Chiller Coffee, not Cincinnati. That was in the featured article on addiction. Now, on to other stuff. After doing some thinking and all about this farmer's market being taken out of Newark and placed over Madison Township, I mean, I came up with two locations that they could have farmer's market right here downtown. There's a grass lot right next to the Yes Club on North First. There's Town Commons Park on Easy Street. We also could have the mayor's concerts too at that park, if the square's going to be unavailable. So there's a lot of things that we could do right here downtown. We don't have to take it outside the city, any of these downtown events. There's no reason for it at all. Both downtown fitness centers are now closed, gone. The Body Core over here, and CrossFit over Market, they're both gone. Demolition work continues at the Owens Corning Aeroflex Building. A lot of this stuff is not getting in the newspaper, so it needs to be brought out publicly, and I guess I'm the one that's appointed to do that. And also, Dolly TV Service is closed due to illness of the owner. May 8th was the last day for the shop over there. And I have all this, so pass it to everybody. Now, I know this lady here, she mentioned about, had a map and everything, about the playground and all. Well, in July 1968, Leeds East End Center put in a brand-new playground at the corner Washington and Cedar. I don't know if it's still there, if it vanished or what. They got a lot of coverage in the Newark Advocate at the time, pictures and articles, thanked everybody that pitched in with it. It's just like we're repeating history again, because things are gone, now we're repeating history. So it's just an interesting concept here. Thank you.
David McElfrish, 153 North 39th Street, Newark. Here speaking tonight is president of Newark Firefighters Local 109. There's a current proposal that's been disseminated that it could impact public safety. I stand here today looking to work with the administration to address the issue that could result in delays in service and impact of safety of the citizens. This new proposal further cuts our staffing, taking necessary fire and EMS vehicles out of service through brownouts and cross-staffing, and potentially closing Station 4. We have discussed with some of you recently, as we continue to question some of the numbers and budget info from the city management. I would ask that we slow this down on these cuts until we have an accurate budget number to work with. After several meetings with the mayor and the safety director included, and the auditor's office, we're still looking at a moving target, but we are making cuts now, so that's a concern. On-the-job injuries are already taking a toll on our staffing. The recent proposal would further reduce the ability of the Newark firefighters to protect our citizens. The city already has 20% fewer firefighters, and while we understand budget limitations, we are already doing more with less. It can't continue if we want to call ourselves a safe city. We are already woefully staffed, well below industry standards. We have worked diligently with Fire Chief Connor to address the budget issues, and I wanted to make it clear that the issues mentioned above, or above the fire chief, that he can only work with what the administration has given him. The issue is not one of available budget space. We believe the money is there. This is a question of priorities. Is the city willing to roll the dice? Are the priorities public safety, or is the priority creating a rainy day fund with threats of impending financial ruin? Newark firefighters hold public safety in high regard, is the reason we come to work every day. We serve the citizens, as does this council, and the citizens deserve a safe city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElfrish. Mr. Crawford.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. Our city recently celebrated the destruction of a handful of blighted houses. I too am grateful that we are using our resources to deal with these troublesome properties. However, I have to ask, does demolition have to be the only answer? With what, if anything, are we planning to replace the obliterated heaps of wood, glass, and metal? Previously, I've addressed the humanitarian crisis of homelessness. I believe that we can partially deal with that problem while also handling our condemned properties. Instead of spending taxpayer dollars to lay waste to these buildings, why not use those funds to fix same-sex structures or replace them with new ones for the purpose of providing an affordable home? After all, the primary root cause of homelessness is the lack of availability in housing within the victim's price range. I don't know about you, but I would rather our community be part of the solution, not the problem. If it is too expensive for the city to take on this task alone, then we should offer incentives to prospective property owners to buy the building in question and transform it into a safe, cheap home for someone in need. Perhaps even working with organizations like the Habitat for Humanity could be an option. Or, we can seriously consider using the empty space for the construction of a village of small, single-bedroom homes for the homeless, as has been done in states like Wisconsin, Oregon, and California. Honestly, the symbolism of optimism offered by erecting a new home out of another's ashes beats the pessimism I see of leaving the space empty once the rubble is cleared away. Rethinking our use of the wrecking ball is far from the only option before us. Beyond the condemned houses, it would be beneficial to the community as a whole if affordable housing wasn't limited to the typically poor parts of town. Though it might be, though it might make some uncomfortable, a community is best served when its inhabitants, rich, poor, and everything in between, live amongst each other as opposed to being separated from those unlike them. Moreover, allowing the poorest citizens to join their affluent compatriots enhances, excuse me, enhances the likelihood that they will receive a quality education, thereby increasing their chances of climbing out of poverty. So, in essence, affordable housing is an issue of homelessness today as well as preventing such in the future. However, continuing the trend of leading our impoverished brothers and sisters down the path of perpetual misery is not an option. If breaking the cycle and fighting poverty is desired, then it is incumbent upon us to recognize the public threat of homelessness as well as embrace the solutions thereof. We can't just simply ignore this vital issue if we truly care about what is in the best interest of our community. With spring having arrived, and with it the spirit of hope and new beginnings, I ask you to ponder what I have said. No single policy or government action is going to solve homelessness, but that doesn't render action useless. At the very least, we can make it easier to avoid living on the streets by doing something to ensure that an affordable place to call home is within reach and is located in an area that will help lift, not trap, the individual and their children. area that will help lift, not trap, the individual and their children. A place of promise, that's the Newark I like to think of, and I'm sure that each of you feels the same way. Let's make that vision a reality by touching the lives of our forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone else for this last section of citizens' comments? Yes, sir. You look familiar.
Sorry to bug you again, but the playground behind, behind the Mount City Baseball Park in the south end, before Little Texas, I think is unsafe and rundown, and should be either replaced or at least refurbished for the safety and enjoyment of our, of our, of the next generations.
Thank you. Do you want me to see them in your ward, because I think you're in trouble.
You've given me some tasks.
Anyone else for citizens' comments? Anyone for the administration this evening? Honorable law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to pass, but I would suggest that you stop up to my office tomorrow afternoon, and we'll chat about that parking meter.
I bought it. I put that on my list. How do you have the parking meter?
They were selling them. I bought it for $10.
I hope you have your receipt.
Thank you, though, for bringing that up. It was off the other. Are you done now? Mayor Hall.
I too want to thank McGuffey students for coming out, and I spent about six years at McGuffey, and very proud of that school, and very proud of all you. And you've done a great job, and I'm sure, thank you for bringing that along. A 10-0 vote, that is a great win for everybody, always good stuff. Thursday, we launched our Click It or Ticket campaign, Newark Fire Department, Newark Police Department, cooperation with Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, and the Granville Post and the State Highway Patrol. And so, through the end of the month, which includes this upcoming Memorial Weekend, I'd suggest everyone click it, or you will take it. We had 19 traffic-related deaths last year in Lincoln County, and 63% of them were not wearing safety belts. And obviously, it's proven that you have a far better chance of surviving a crash with the belt on, so I just want to remind everybody of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, your first this evening.
Yes, thank you. Well, I want to congratulate the McGuffey School. That was a really fine presentation. Also, I want to thank the administration, because I keep getting good things from people in my ward about the repaving of Sharon Valley and Londondale and Stonewall. And we appreciate it, and I've had a lot of good comments about it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have that on my list. I was wondering. And also, on that note, I was going to say, William left. He better wait in line, because American Pickers are usually there first, and they're going to get to those types of items before anybody else. Those are high commodity items. I want to thank the students also of McGuffey for coming out and actually exercising a great opportunity for themselves as far as a learning process, and it's not just reading it out of a book. I appreciate you actually executing a plan, and it's fantastic what you have done, and I hope you've enjoyed it, and I'm sure it's something that you'll remember for quite a long time, and hopefully, it'll be in the newspaper tomorrow, and you'll be able to come out and keep it a scrapbook. So I want to thank you also. And Mrs. Borja, I want to thank you also. Thank you. I want to also say that it was nice to be able to vote on the capital improvement fund, because it's dealing with street paving, so I did appreciate that, seeing that this evening. As most of you know, I too believe in priorities, like Mr. McElfresh has indicated. I believe in our safety forces, and I believe in our infrastructure, and our infrastructure, our percentages of funds going into that is very low, and I just know it's something that's important to this community, not only for the citizens, but also safety, and also economic development for different areas. So, it was nice to see that. And I also want to wish all the local baseball teams and softball teams good fortune, although like, Newark Catholic Softball Team already had misfortune, fortune of losing. So, hopefully, we'll see a run in some of the tournaments coming up, and also, there's a lot of folks in our community that are doing very well in track and other sports also, but I do know it's some great opportunities in other sports, and I always like to see those student athletes succeed, and without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marby. Mr. Ratt?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the McGuffey students and Mrs. Borja for coming out, and thank you in particular for educating me. I know I learned a lot from you guys. I appreciate that. I want to promote, since this is the last council meeting of the month, next Friday, the 29th, I'm sorry, not next Friday, a week from Friday, the 29th, is the Final Friday Food Truck Festival. Yeah, threw that one out, messing that up, that's good. But that sounds, it's the first, I believe that's the first final Friday of the season. Sounds like they've got a lot of great things planned, some live music, they're going to have food trucks. Sounds like it's going to be a great event, so I wanted to promote that. Wanted to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day, and I would challenge you to think about what, why we have a three-day weekend, and to let you know it's not just to have a barbecue. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Mr. Lutt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank the students from McGuffey, and Mrs. Borja, and Dr. Shields, and Dr. Lepper, and their good work advocating for our historic earthworks. Thank you. I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lutt. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thanked, and you know, the McGuffey students and Mrs. Borja, those who are working on the Newark earthwork, so just keep up the good work, and anything that I can do, or anyone else, I'm sure is willing to participate and help out how we can. Another group of students that we have been working with this year has concluded their first-year service, and I want to thank the mayor for working with me on the project, and that's the Newark Youth Council. We've completed a one-year for 14 students to sit up amongst these chairs, and they had several discussions, they received presentations from different city administrators. Some members of council and council president have sat in on some of those meetings, so I appreciate the individuals that have sat in on some of those meetings. But I guess today, I just specifically want to recognize the teachers that helped, helped us organize this, because each of the students that were sitting in our chairs were selected from their respective teachers. From Newark High School, it was Sue Grenrod, and Sue is actually retiring this year, so Lauren Heck will be taking her place for the next school year, so the mayor and I will get to work with Lauren Heck from Newark High School for this coming year. From Newark Catholic, Eric Scheck. The Yes Club, Amanda Vazella. C-Tech, Ruth Ziegler. Newark Digital Academy, Ryan Walker. And the protein center was Patty Kelly. And so I think each of those school advisors, you know, they did a lot of things in the background to help make the Newark Youth Council successful, and we can only make it better for the next year. And so, I just appreciate the mayor's time and all the other different city officials for participating with the Newark Youth Council. My last comments, sir, wanted to sort of echo, Daniel had stood up and mentioned poverty that exists within our city, which we all know, at least according to the census, a third of our population exists in poverty. And when we're talking about that issue, it's such a broad issue, and we could be dealing with housing, transportation, education, substance abuse, mental health issues, or even just employment. And one of those issues, when we focus on employment, a subsection of people that are in poverty is people that have served their time for whatever mistakes or whatever issues they have done, they have gone within our terminal justice system and served their time as was sentenced by a judge, and then they've come out, and they've participated in programs like the Spencer House, or the Courage House, or Mental Health America, or other good nonprofit organizations that exist within our city, and they're trying to become productive citizens within our society after they've made their mistakes and lived up to that. One of the barriers to employment at which these individuals come across is a term that some of you may have read in the Dispatch or the Newark Advocate, it's called "ban the box." Recently, in the Advocate, there was an article talking about how the state of Ohio has removed that conviction box from job forms, from job applications. The state has voluntarily done that to take away if you're applying for a state agency. I've been working with Director Sass and Director Buzzkirk on this issue for local ordinance, but I like Director Sass's term, not necessarily "ban the box," but delaying the box, because we're not, what we're trying to do is to get people fill out the application, but be able to still get to the interview, not getting rid of background checks, not getting rid of what, you know, trying to hide, we want complete transparency, but just getting people in the door so that they can get an interview. And so I like that term "delay the box," and I'm glad that Doug put that in my, in my mind when we've had meetings outside of council chambers. So, there is a meeting. Lincoln Memorial Hospital is going to be hosting a meeting of different human resource directors. That's going to be on Friday, June 5th, at 2:00, and it is going to be a discussion about fair hiring policies within several of our major employers within our community, and hopefully, the city in Newark will join that. And once again, it's Friday, June 5th, at 2:00 at Lincoln Memorial Hospital, they have a conference room there, I'm sure there'll be signers to direct people, but if you want to come and attend, I would encourage you to do so. And, but no, Lincoln Memorial Hospital, Denison University, some other major employers are on board with this, and our own state representative, Scott Bryan, has come out publicly for this as well, and so I just wanted to put that on people's radars for an event to attend. And I'll call a finance committee meeting for the Tuesday after Memorial Day, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I'd like to congratulate the students of McGuffey for a successful project. I too went to McGuffey kindergarten through fifth grade, so very proud of you guys. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost.
Mrs. Borja, you should be really proud of yourself, and you being a fine Newark product yourself, that's got to be a good feeling. Dr. Lepper, Dr. Shields, it's got to be nice to know that your message is moving on to another generation. That's got to feel really good. Mr. Fraser, thank you for your project. We appreciate it very much. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mrs. Floyd?
As a retired Newark history, government civics teacher, I'm very proud of you guys. You did a wonderful job, and thank you, Mrs. Borja. You did a great job, too. I appreciate everything that you did. I think this is important in your educational experience, as well as important for the city of Newark, so I'm really glad you're here. Jeff mentioned the Final Friday of the food trucks, I just want to mention a couple other. Final Fridays is designed by the Downtown Newark Association as a way to get people to come downtown and sort of see what's downtown, so that you go to the various stores and you see that there's, you know, this restaurant, or that flower shop, or, you know, an art show, and all kinds of things. Just a couple of other things, the food truck is May 29th. The end of June, I don't have the date, but the final Friday in June is a chocolate experience, lots of chocoholics around. The end of July, July 31st, and August 1st, there is a combination art show, history tour, and Downtown Newark has lots of history in it, and a quilt show at First Presbyterian Church, which was gorgeous last year. And at most of these Final Fridays, we can all purchase for $10 a We Dig Newark t-shirt for the big dig that's going on downtown for a while now, so you might all consider stopping by to purchase a We Dig Newark t-shirt. I mentioned last time, I think, the community roundtables that First Presbyterian Church is having, the first Wednesday of the months of June, July, and August at noon, there's a lunch provided, and good comments and discussions in June. It's the mayor. In July, it's Sherry Hottinger from the Chamber of Commerce, and in August, it's Mark Mallor from the Development Department. So I encourage you to attend that. And finally, for those of you who mentioned the problems downtown on the west side of the square with teenagers, I had a couple people comment to me about that, and I talked to Bill Spurgeon, and I know that Bill, and the mayor, and the interim police chief, and I think Fred was there from the CIC, and basically, what they're saying is, if there's a problem, if people feel unsafe, call the non-emergency police number. It's 670-7201. And that, then the police will come down and check it out. If people feel threatened, then call 670-7201. And with that, I pass. Thank you.
Not now. Hang on, hang on till we get done.
I'll talk to you after.
Mr. Guffey?
Yeah, thanks. Mr. President, along that point that Ms. Floyd just made, I, you know, I think we all appreciate Mr. Blaine's comments, and I think everyone here cares about safety, not only on the square, but in the entire city. I do think that, especially now when we have a shortage of police officers, that some of the businesses downtown can be helpful in trying to discourage this type of loitering in front of the businesses. I felt sort of bad, because I saw, I think it was Friday night, I opened my Advocate on my phone, and I saw that this, the Advocate referenced this activity occurring, I think it said in the neighborhood of a certain establishment across the street, and, and most of us know the woman that owns that establishment, and know that she's the type of person that wouldn't tolerate that, and as a matter of fact, I talked to her about it, and, you know, she would have banged some heads together if it had been in front of her place, but I do think that, you know, it points to a serious problem that we all need to take serious and do everything we can to make sure that we work with the administration to see that we have adequate patrols so that our citizens feel safe downtown and elsewhere in our city. Now, a couple of other things I wanted to mention, speaking of law enforcement, I know that a number of us attended the Newark Police Awards Ceremony, and I just want to say for myself, listening to the presentations of the awards at the Midland last week, sort of reinforced for me the importance of the safety piece and the human piece of coordination and collaboration between our police dispatchers and our police officers. And if anyone missed that, I don't know whether anyone did it on video, but just to hear how they work together in some very tedious situations, again reinforced for me why I'm so skeptical of the idea of moving that service to the county. I am glad the president cleared up where that parking meter came from. The, I want to, I want to say, I think it's a sad day when Dr. DTV closes. I mean, that is, I can remember that when I was a dumb little boy. And so, hate to see Mr. Dockerty in his tenure downtown. Along the points that Mr. McElfresh made, I, something I think maybe as a council, we need to take a pretty close eye on is, is the budgeting and how we, you know, the administration presents a budget to us for X number personnel, not only in police and fire, but in other departments, and it seems like, you know, we don't fill all the vacancies that we fund, and I know that's an administrative decision, but then we end up using the money for other purposes that the council really didn't intend to use it for. And so I think we need to engage in that whole discussion. And then the last thing, and I thought maybe, maybe the safety director could check on this and let me know, or let us know, and that is, I know that we are doing a lot of mutual aid with EMS now, and it would just be interesting to know, if possible, what impact this is having on our EMS billing, because obviously, if Heath, Newark Township, or Granville does an EMS run in the city of Newark, I don't think we're able to bill for it, and, and I think it would be nice to know the impact that those mutual aid runs are having on that EMS billing. Oh, the last thing, sort of a point of personal privilege, my, I know I've mentioned before, my granddaughter, Charis. Our family has established a nonprofit with the American Childhood Cancer Organization, and to raise funds for other families that are on a similar journey with childhood cancer. And so, the first big event that we're having here in the city of Newark is going to be on the 13th of June at the GMP Hall on Hudson Avenue. It's going to be pretty much an all-day rummage sale, and again, all the work by this nonprofit is volunteer, and all of the funds are going to be used to support Central Ohio families who have children with pediatric cancer. And there's also going to be a 5K in, in August, and hopefully, a chili cook-off in October. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guffey. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Mrs. Borja, too, and your class. You guys did a great job, a lot of work. Hang in there, keep going, there might be bumps, but, you know, you can get over those, so thank you again. And with that, I'd like to call a capital improvement meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I'll start my thanks to the McGuffey students, did a great job. Autumn will get you the signed legislation, Mrs. Borja, so we can, you can do whatever you need to do with that. Thank you all for coming tonight, thanks for your attention. Just remember, City Hall will be closed next Monday, and so it's a royal day, so committee meetings will be Tuesday, the 26th, here in this room at 5:30. Our next council meeting will be June 1st at 7:00, also here in this room. So, motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Ratt, all the favoritists of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Your adjourn.